Excellent done, and this is the most historic moment again at Montego Bay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin, I would gladly like if people could silent, put their cellphones on silent or turn them off, so that your sexy telephone rings would not disturb the meeting and the press conference. And welcome to the final press conference at the end of the 39th regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government here in Montego Bay of the Caribbean Community. To bring us up to date on what took place during the last two and a half days, we have with us the Chairman of the Caribbean Community, the Most Honourable Andrew Hollness, the Prime Minister of Jamaica, the Doctor the Honourable Timothy Harris, the Prime Minister of St Kitts and Nevis, the Honourable Mia Motley, the Prime Minister of Barbados, the Honourable Alan Chastney, the Prime Minister of St Lucia, and His Excellency Irwin LaRocque, the Secretary General of the Caribbean Community. We will begin with a statement from the Chairman, following which we will have your questions. Sir Chairman.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. We have come to the end of a very successful 39th Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, CARICOM. I am pleased to note that we have had a very useful, energetic, spirited, and we could add other words to that, discussion, exchange, and interactions over the last two days. These have led to a successful, productive, and decisive conference here in Montego Bay. We had a record number of delegates this year, and I am even more pleased to note that all heads of government for all 15 member states and four of our five associate states were in attendance at the conference, and that's a good sign in and of itself. Our theme, building stronger, resilient, and secure partnerships for prosperity was very appropriate as individual states and as a regional bloc. We all want to see a stronger region and prosperity for all. We can confidently say that the 39th Conference has delivered on the long-awaited promises to our citizens of this region. We promised our people's free movement, and this conference has recommitted to the free movement of skills and has agreed that all states by the 31st of December 2018 would have put in place the necessary legislative framework to facilitate all 10 approved categories of skills. We promised that we would ensure family unification through the granting of important rights to spouses and dependents of citizens that move across the region to work, provide their services, and establish companies. We have guaranteed these rights through the Protocol on Contingent Rights that we have just signed a few minutes ago. This is a matter that has been long outstanding and is a major step that should encourage greater use of the free movement regime as it ensures greater level of comfort and peace of mind for families. This is a crucial step to making CARICOM more functional and relevant to the people of the region. Another important achievement of this conference is the unanimous adoption of procedures on the refusal of entry, which will be applied at the border. These procedures, which all members must have in place no later than the 1st of August 2018, will guide border officials on how they should treat nationals who are refused entry. This will safeguard the rights of all community nationals moving across the region. A matter of note is of, this is a matter that is of great importance to many. To continue this momentum to deliver for our citizens of the region, the leaders have also agreed to a special meeting on the CSME, the CARICOM Single Market and Economy, to be held in Trinidad and Tobago in November this year, and to give sole focus to this flagship issue of the community. Furthermore, the Prime Ministerial Subcommittee on the CSME will now have quarterly meetings beginning in September in Barbados, which will be hosted by Prime Minister Motley, to give urgency to the implementation process. We have also placed a great focus on advancing those areas which would help to create enabling support measures for a competitive single market. These include an investment policy, an investment code, an incentives regime, an integrated capital market, and securities legislation. As leaders, we expect that these matters will be ready for full adoption at the 40th meeting of the conference in July 2019. These mechanisms will enable strong support measures for a successful CSME. We have also simplified administrative procedures for the issuance of skilled certificates and police certificates of character. In respect of the CARICOM Review Commission report, the heads agreed that it would be taken into account in the work of the Prime Ministerial Subcommittee on the CSME and at a special meeting of conference in November 2018. In relation to building resilience, member states were urged to promote and maintain the regional response mechanism coordinated by SEDIMA, and encouraged the international community to align its support with this mechanism, including early recovery. On the matter of security, regional security agencies were mandated to work closely with national security heads to address the various challenges, emphasizing the need to strengthen the network of security heads in the region to promote further information and intelligence sharing. Member states were also encouraged to urgently update all legal instruments required to combat crime and enhance regional security. Heads of government also endorsed six priorities related to non-communicable diseases for the region to advocate for during the negotiation of the outcome political document. These are establishing and maintaining a smoke-free status for the region, implementing policies geared to preventing childhood obesity, including for health promoting school environments, and front-of-package labeling, promoting the elimination of cancer of the cervix, support for mitigation of post-disaster vulnerabilities related to NCDs, in particular nutrition treatment and care, increasing international financing and technical support, and strengthening accountability through national coordinating mechanisms. At this 39th conference, we welcome His Excellency Miguel Diaz Canal, President of Cuba, and acknowledge the continued strength of the fraternal relations between CARICOM and Cuba based on strong solidarity, mutual support, and technical cooperation. We underline the need to increase trade and economic relations, and in this regard noted the proposal of Cuba to appoint working teams to identify commercial opportunities. We also welcome His Excellency Sebastian Pinera, President of Chile, and reaffirm the community's commitment to strengthening relations and technical cooperation links. They also viewed the visit as an opportunity to explore the possibilities for further political dialogue and meaningful cooperation between CARICOM and Chile. CARICOM heads expressed an interest in furthering collaboration in areas of food security, the blue economy and oceans, and trade promotion. We have recognized that the current classification of marijuana as an illicit drug presents a challenge in the conduct of research to fully understand and ascertain the medicinal benefits of cannabis. We therefore agree that action is necessary at the national level by the relevant authorities to review the current status of marijuana as a Schedule I drug with a view to reclassification. We also agreed that each member state, in accordance with its own circumstances, would determine its own pathway to pursue the law reforms necessary as proposed by the Regional Marijuana Commission. At this 45-year milestone of this institution, we have recommitted to making the mechanisms within CARICOM work. I believe that we have made good progress in our deliberations over the last two days. I am confident that the citizens of the region will be pleased with the outcome of this conference, and we will continue to deliver on our promises to them. I am resolved as the Chair to ensure that we take action. We must get things done to make a difference. We are resolved to now begin to implement the decisions we make to improve the perceptions, especially amongst our youth. For credibility, we must have meaningful benefits of the intervals accountable and press for success in our community.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister. In asking your questions, could you please state your name and the agency that you represent? The floor is open for your questions.
Questions?
Good evening. Sir Chairman, Edmund Campbell from the Gleaner Company. Sir Chairman, the institutions of CARICOM clearly cannot operate effectively without the requisite financing. What concrete steps will be made during this, your tenure, to get delinquent member states to make their contributions?
A very good question. CARICOM operates based on the commitment of heads, and what I have sought to do is to reignite the energy in CARICOM. And I believe that a word that all the heads can agree on is that there is great energy and great commitment to make the institutions work. Now, that energy and commitment translates into action, and one of the actions that we must do is to fund. I know that SEDIMA, for example, which is now becoming a focal and important institution in CARICOM by virtue of the frequency and intensity of natural disasters, that they have asked for an increase in their budget, and members have considered it and are going back to their respective countries to see how they can give a significant and meaningful increase. So I am of the view, Edmund, that our leaders, our heads are responsible, they are committed, and they have the renewed energy. And so those members that are outstanding, you should be seeing some action in this regard to ensuring that outstanding payments are made. I wish to state for the record that Jamaica found the energy and enthusiasm and commitment earlier on to make sure that it made a positive impact on any outstanding contributions and fees that it may have had.
Before my other colleagues come in, Sir Prime Minister, one might argue that here we are again CARICOM leaders kicking the can down the road again to deal with the CSME issue. I note that a meeting will be held in November. Notwithstanding, I suppose that matter will be dealt with exclusively at that meeting, but based on the urgency of this matter, having heard all the CARICOM leaders, you know, express their view at the opening ceremony, don't you think that we should try to approach this thing in a more urgent way?
Well, there is no delicate way to deal with these issues, except to say that the integration process cannot be rushed beyond what the people of each sovereign country will allow. So we sit here as heads as one community, but each head has to report to its electorate. And so an important part of the integration process has to be education, public education, how we bring our populace along with the decisions that we have to make. So we understand that what Jamaica may want may not be what is acceptable to the electorate in Barbados, for example. But the leaders, the heads, have a duty to bring together the community. And I think that what we saw today was that the leaders were prepared to go back, consult, debate, discuss, and then meet again. Meeting again is not kicking the can down the road. We left here today with major achievements which advance the CSM, which is the single market, and moves us towards the CSME. For example, the signing of contingent rights. That's a tangible way in which our citizens will experience true integration. If someone decides that they want to establish in Jamaica, then the contingent rights allows their families to come and establish in Jamaica, and vice versa. We made good progress on the protocol for the refusal of entry of citizens, an issue which, I'm speaking now as Prime Minister of Jamaica, has affected many Jamaicans. But Prime Minister Motley, Prime Minister Rowley, made progress in this regard, and we have agreed that this must be implemented. So yes, you know, there can be meeting frustration, that whenever we meet upon a blockage towards a decision, we say, okay, let's meet again. But it shouldn't be interpreted as kicking the can down the road. Remember, it is, we are a fairly large body integrating with different electorates, so it does take time. But I want to assure the citizens of CARICOM that there is the energy, there is the will, and there is the commitment.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to back you up on this matter. This is in no way a kicking of the can down the road. I've been around this community a long time. When last I was in government, the Protocol on Contingent Rights was there, ready for signature. Ten years has elapsed since we came back into government. For this protocol to have been signed today is the most significant event in the history of Caribbean affairs since the single market was signed here in Jamaica and came into effect here in Jamaica in 2006. This is where it matters. This is where it makes a difference to the lives and decisions of people. And I think that the media can work with us to communicate in a tangible way what this means for every Caribbean citizen who belongs to a country that is signatory to the single market. I also want to point out that far from being kicked down the road, the Council of Finance Ministers had not met for five years. The Council of Finance Ministers met on Wednesday morning. We agreed at this Conference of Heads as well that that conference would meet again in September in Barbados to do the critical work on the competitiveness issues for the single market, which all have economic competitiveness at its core, the integration of our capital markets, the financial services architecture, the common policy for investment and the code for investment such that we are not competing against each other in a mad race to the bottom. And these things are critical towards being able to make the market work more effectively for those who want to invest across the region. In Barbados, we have collective savings of just under $9 billion. I would like to believe that our citizens will have an opportunity to gain a larger return than what they get now if they put their money in a bank account. In a bank account in Barbados, they are getting for savings 0.1%. They're effectively paying the banks to keep their money. If there are opportunities in Jamaica, or St Lucia, or Suriname, or Guyana, then our citizens should be able to mobilize their savings and make that investment, and vice versa. This conference mandated that those agreements must be in place for signature before next July. So far from kicking the can down the road, what we have done is to effectively set a series of timelines and dates and meetings. COFAP in September, Prime Ministerial Subcommittee in September, Heads again in November. And the reason for the Heads in November is that there is a legitimate issue as we move forward on the broader framework that the LDCs have, the OICS countries in particular, with respect to how they are treated with respect to Chapter 7 of the treaty. And there are deeper considerations that we need to discuss that can't be discussed if we haven't other items on the agenda. So the Prime Minister of Trinidad, for the last two years, I think, has asked that there be a single meeting, single agenda meeting on the CSME. That's what September, November is about. There are also good, very good recommendations from the Golden Commission with respect to governance, with respect to dispute resolution, whether a person should have to go to the CCJ, which is a heavy cost, or whether there ought to be some intermediate dispute resolution body that is more effective and efficient, whether there are other aspects of how we change how we do business in it. We can't do this while doing 10 other agenda items at a heads meeting. So far from kicking the can down the road, we've created a special place and a special space in November to deal with some of the larger issues that hopefully will inform our work for the next decade.
Edmund and other journalists, I think important for the editorial description of what has happened here is that there is a sense that CARICOM is all about talk. And so yes, there is sometimes much talk, but what we have seen here is that we as leaders have had to confront the implementation deficit. We as leaders have sought to ensure that the mechanisms and the institutions work. So for example, having the meeting of Finance and Planning Ministers, that's very important because that would be the body of heads that would determine the matters that would see to us moving swiftly towards the single economy and the single market. So that's a step, very important. And we have taken, I would say, very deep consideration of the institutions of CARICOM. And, you know, granted, this, we can't have that discussion in one day with so many other issues. So that the fact that heads have agreed that we will dedicate one day, which is a major thing for heads to leave their country, to fly into Trinidad and sit down and focus for one day on it, it's very important. And I would want that, from an editorial perspective, as Mia said, that you could help us to explain to the population how important this is.
I didn't know you know Renaissance, Mia.
I don't want to belabor the point, but I also want to make the point that there was a clear recognition of the cost of lack of implementation. And that's the opportunity cost that's lost every single day in allowing each one of us to be competitive and this region to be competitive. Functional cooperation does not in any way take away the competitive edge of one country from another. But what it does, it makes us collectively stronger. I think that the prime ministers in the caucus also recognize that we're here, let's not fool ourselves. The Bruce Golding Report brought us here together. And rather than some of the critical things that the report brought out, causing people to shy away or to give up on the region, the fact that every prime minister was here... to shy away or to give up on the region, the fact that every Prime Minister was here is recognition that we're committed to this cause. And everybody came here ready to fight to preserve this coalition. And I think that one of the Prime Ministers, I think it was Mia, who talked about the fact that there's no example of any sector in which we're going to be stronger by ourselves. There's only great examples to show that we're going to be stronger by being united. The blacklist that has taken place, what's happened to the OTIs, those are not going to be resolved individually. They're only going to be resolved if we stay together on a collective basis. The ability for members to be able to pay their dues is directly correlated to economic growth. There's no member here who would willingly not pay, but there are a lot of conflicting interests in which people are underwater. And there's some tough decisions that we're going to have to make, but we have to present functional corporation in a new mechanism, one in which it tells us how much we can save and how much stronger we can be, and whether it's redounding to the benefit of every single citizen in our region. So, I left here, and I'm leaving here comforted in the fact that there is this renewed energy. And I want to thank the Prime Minister of Jamaica for asking Bruce Golding to put this document together, but more importantly, that he agreed to share it, because it would have been very easy for Jamaica to have kept it advice for themselves. And I think that that has really re-energized our confidence and our understanding of what CARICOM represents to us in being able to move forward. But opportunity cost is being lost. If we can do more together from a functional corporation, and I think that, again, Prime Minister Motley is being very modest in that what she's done in bringing some direction here, particularly with CSME and with COFAP, is important. When the world hit a cliff with the financial recession in 2008, 2009, they went from the G7 to the G20, and the G20 met on a quarterly basis to resolve issues. And I think that there was that same kind of commitment that was given to her by all the members, that as often as we need to meet, to get through the decisions that we have to, find ways in which we can restimulate our economies, because there was no form in which we were talking about economic growth. It's not going to happen by itself. It's going to require focus, attention, creative ideas, and commitment. And I can say to you that I'm leaving this forum today more confident that's going to take place and that we had frank conversations. We didn't agree for everything, but that's what you want. You want to know that people are speaking honestly, because that honesty means they're engaged. So I just want to congratulate Prime Minister of Jamaica, and I certainly want to also thank Prime Minister Motley for her chairing of the COFAP meeting and her willingness, despite her own domestic issues, to commit the time and the energy to make sure that this forum of CSME is working for the benefit of all of us.
Question?
Thank you. My name is Janet Silver. I'm with the Lena Newspaper. I would like you to elaborate on the issue of transportation in the region and how you plan to deal with that, as well as to find out if anything came out of the head tax that the cruise ships are not paying.
No, that's part of the built-in agenda that we carry forward with us, the single domestic space for transport, the single, as I indicated in my speech two days ago, that is a natural corollary to the hassle-free travel that we're trying to move to. The freedom of movement of the ten established categories and having the legislation in place by the end of the year is one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is people moving through our borders without any opportunity to be, or without the burden of being harassed. And the refusal, the protocol refusal to enter that we agreed upon today will help create that hassle-free travel. We go back to the Eastern Caribbean, hopefully to have a shareholders' meeting on Liat in the near future, because that's going to be critical for us in terms of transport. And we've also agreed that we need to work and see what the private sector needs in order to be able to stimulate maritime transport. But that's part of the built-in agenda that could not be settled here today or yesterday. And we look forward to being able to do that over the course of the next year or so. On the head tax, no, there was no discussion on that. Suffice it to say that I think all of us in our own time and collectively in the context of how we protect our blue economy, we will get there. But I don't know that this is a matter for public discussion without more intense discussion within the caucus.
If I can just also add, I mean, a simple thing in functional corporation. So, one of the most successful regions in civil aviation is the Central American region, one civil aviation authority. We have a Jamaica Civil Aviation Authority, a Barbados Civil Aviation Authority, a Trinidad Civil Aviation Authority, a Suriname Civil Aviation Authority, a Guyanese Civil Aviation Authority, and an OICS Civil Aviation Authority. This, with all additional costs and almost treating it like if everybody's a separate territory. So, part of that aspect is we've got to take a realistic view as to how we're going to clean up this mess, and that it's not about just taxes but reducing costs and making it a seamless traveling for our tourists. We have situations where we're going in between countries in the Caribbean, having to get off a plane and going back through security. All that is not only inconvenienced, but is adding cost to the entire process. And I can say to you that there is a commitment by all of us that we have to sit down and do it, and there are best practices out there. The key is, once we've recognized it, how long are we going to take to transition? Is this something that we can say, the opportunity cost that we're losing every single day? And again, this is nothing that's going to take away from any competitiveness. Whether the OICS has its own civil aviation authority or we have an integrated civil aviation authority is not going to make any one of us less competitive of each other, but it's certainly going to strengthen the region. So that's a very good example of what we've been talking about.
The other side had a question?
Yes, thanks. Albert Ferguson, I R F M. Prime Minister, wholeness, what's your opinion on the having members, leaders of the opposition, being part of CARICOM as observing members? And has CARICOM considered that process?
Well, let me answer the last question, because then that will answer the first question, that this meeting did not consider that. I'm not certain whether or not that has ever been raised before the Secretary General could answer. And my own view would depend on what colleague Heads would have to agree. So I couldn't give you my opinion without consultation with all the Heads, because, of course, we all have different oppositions.
Chair, the issue of leaders of opposition being observers, no. There was a time when there was meetings between leaders of the opposition and heads of government, and it's been quite a while since that has happened.
St. Lucia?
Yes, in St. Lucia. Must be going on fifteen years or so, I think, or ten years. It's as long as that.
My understanding is when the secretariat goes to the countries, that they do meet with the leaders of the opposition. And I know a lot of the international organizations do that. So the involvement is taking place at that level. It's not necessarily one that has to take place at a meeting.
Well, I'm going to allow my friend Timothy to comment, but just to be clear, I understand what you're saying, that it's important to have, because this is national to regional, it's important to have bipartisan view on policy, or at least to observe the policy process. And that is admirable, which is why, that when we did the Commission Report, we took it to Parliament and had a resolution debated in Parliament to come to a common position for Jamaica. So we acknowledge that, yes, it is important that many of the decisions that we're making should either have observation or participation.
Thanks. I would say that Saint Kitten Nevis supports the broad inclusion, not only with respect to opposition, but broader engagement of civil society in decision-making. And indeed, we have developed a mechanism of national consultation at least once a year, and at that, the opposition, all groups become involved in making their input or having an opportunity to speak to that matter. I would want to speak to one unique feature of our own OICS integration system, where we have the OICS Parliament as an institution that itself works and in which we have put from time to time important matters, matters to do with climate change, for example, where as part of the agreement, the opposition is represented in some proportion as part of the country delegation. And the movement and participation of opposition members are in fact financed by the state. So, the OICS then have a good practice, which can be refined and which can be improved. But I believe that there is merit in having some opportunity, yes, to speak to observers, but some opportunity for inclusion, because part of the implementation deficit, of course, is due to the fact that usually when different governments, there are change in governments, the opposition at times come to the table not fully sees with where we are at in terms of the regional agenda and are akin with an absence of adequate information, which at times bring a lull to the speed and the depth with which we go with the integration process. So I think there is merit, and perhaps it is something as part of our good governance agenda. We certainly can try at the CARICOM level to have developed and to have present as a working model of a best practice.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, very briefly, I think that it is more than the official opposition, as they may not always represent the minority opposition, but I think the bigger issue is, well, that too, but I think the bigger issue is civil society. And that's one of the reasons why I recommended that we start streaming, and I hope we will, the Bureau will consider it, that we start streaming plenary sessions, because it was very clear to me, when there were changes of government, and Prime Minister Gonzalez may recall it better than most, because he withstood the changes. But when there were changes in government post 2006, immediately the new governments coming in did not have a sense of CARICOM, did not have a sense of the accomplishments, did not have a sense of commitment, bless you. And to that extent, to that extent, it meant that, in my view, what we have seen in the last decade has come more from the inability to recognize that you cannot have an adversarial approach in a consensus-making body. CARICOM is meant to build consensus. If it is only speaking to the governments and not the opposition or civil society, there will always be that division in our member countries, and when there are changes of government, we are at risk of going back instead of going forward. So the simplest way to cover opposition, civil society, everybody, is stream and engage. And that way, we won't get into the niceties of official opposition or minority opposition of the Parliament.
I reserve my answer, because there are different perspectives.
This will be the final question. The leaders have had a very long three day, two and a half or three days, so final question.
I understand, sir. My name is Janelle Pressus. I'm from Television Jamaica, Chairman and Prime Minister of Jamaica. I have a question for you, but just very quickly. General Secretary...
That sounds ominous.
Very quickly, General Secretary, we have an issue of members not paying dues. Is the CARICOM secretariat broke? And, Mr. Wholeness, this week, we saw the swearing-in of a new CCJ president. You sang his praises, sir. You also spoke of the importance of the CCJ and how it's integral to CARICOM. But there's a question mark still remaining as it relates to whether Jamaica will make the CCJ its final appellate court. So is CARICOM secretariat broke? Answer your question. Thank you.
I knew it was ominous.
Chair, I'm sorry. From time to time, we do suffer from cash flow problems. I wouldn't say that we're broke because we have not shut down the secretariat, but we do suffer from cash flow problems.
Are the leaders aware, sir?
Sorry?
Are the leaders aware and have you sought help?
Very much, very much. Jamaica, for instance, has been making tremendous strides in bringing down its arrears. Others have as well, to varying degrees.
So let's talk about the arrears.
We have brought our arrears down to zero, my understanding.
I don't think it's quite zero yet.
Except in, yes.
Secretary General, you can put a figure for us. How much money are we talking about?
Not off the top of my head, but it's not inconsiderable.
In the millions and the billions?
I cannot put a figure to it, but it's not inconsiderable.
Isn't the bigger issue, and maybe we should say to you, that one of the decisions of Heads today was to send to COFAP the whole question of what kind of financing mechanism, should there be automaticity of financing? So I don't want this to get resolved into a twist, when the truth is that Heads have taken a decision to accept our reality and to look at what are the best options ahead of us. And I think that, in fairness, that should be respected, because we accept that it takes cash to care, and it takes cash to execute, and that this is still the best way we have determined for us to go forward. So I look forward to us reviewing recommendations. I think the secretariat has had put in motion a report that will come to us, and we'll look at it in due course, but to comment in advance is to prejudice the outcome.
Understandable. CCJ?
The CCJ is an important organ of the functional cooperation of CARICOM. And every word that I've said at the swearing-in of the new president of the CCJ, I meant it. There is no question about the quality of their judgment, the jurisprudence they're developing, and the importance of the institution in its original jurisdiction. It is important for the functioning of the regional integration process, and we stand by that and we support that. But our position has not changed as it relates to the appellate jurisdiction. And as we have said, when we were in opposition, we maintain our position in government that at an appropriate time, this is a matter that the Jamaican people should speak on in a referendum, and that has been our position, and it has not changed.
When, sir?
At an appropriate time.
Mr. Shasner, if you can also comment on the CCJ, because I know St. Lucia also has a similar position.
Again, a very, very similar position. You know, in opposition, we had a particular position as a party. We maintain that position. As I indicated, as important as the CCJ is as a decision to make, it is not on my priority or my government's priority list at this point. But I think coming out of this meeting, it's something that we will always continue to give due consideration to, and at the appropriate time, we will make the announcement. But right now, we're very much focused on growing our economy, resolving the high unemployment rate that we have, resolving the debt problem that we have, and putting ourselves in a position, a much more financially viable position. So, at some point, the CCJ will come up and we will make a pronouncement on it. But I like Jamaica, and while St. Lucia, it's not required for us to go to referendum, there is consideration by many that we ought to still go to a referendum, because we think it's a position that the people should make a decision on. But we're not even close to that point right now.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen of the media and to our heads of government. Just to remind you that tonight is Jamaica night, my understanding, and the sandals, no cameras, no recorders. Enjoy the night. And tomorrow morning at six o'clock, the CARICOM 10K, where athletes from... the CARICOM 10K, where athletes from ten countries will be taking part right here in Montego Bay. Thank you very much and good night.